Good evening. Today is Monday, July 24th, 2023, and it is 7:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Prosper Independent School Board, Board of Trustees. I hereby call to order pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Bridges, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Linker, and Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. Mr. Linker, will you please pray for us?
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening. We thank you for our community, for our staff, for our teachers. Lord, as we get ready to start a new school year, we ask for protection both over health and safety for our students, for our teachers, and for all of our staff. Lord, tonight, we ask for wisdom and discernment for our board. We thank you for all of our blessings. We love you. In your name, amen.
Amen. Please sustain for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, or which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Dial, you've got the board vision for us this evening?
Yes, sir. The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Let's see here. We've got some future dates up here. It's a little unusual that we don't have celebrations this month, but hey, it's summertime. We will be back to those again here very, very quickly. Let's see here. Moving right along, we have got no public comments at this point. We will do that later on. That'll take us right into informational reports.
Okay, so student enrollment, when you all received your packet last week, 27,610 students with about 1,300 students sitting in the pending state. Got a report as of today, and we are at 27,917 this week with 1,067 students in pending. And that pending would be maybe not having immunizations or proof of residency. Something's missing in the requirements to be enrolled. But our parents have done a great job of getting that number down quite a bit and getting those students truly verified and enrolled, so we appreciate them.
The big push worked last week?
The big push, yes.
There we go. Good. All right. Thank you for that. Let's see here. We've got a bond 2019 construction projects update. These were, I think several of these were taken a couple of weeks ago. So a lot has been going on since then. But that is the, that is the update on our construction projects. Y'all did see on there, high school number four coming up, which we're already at high school number four, and wow, on that. We'll have a groundbreaking on that on the fourth.
Yes, August 4th at 8:30 AM.
That's right. AM. Very good. Before the heat hits that day.
Yes, I do want to give a shout out, if I can, for just a minute, Mr. Beavers, to Pogue Construction, absolutely outstanding work that they've done. Ongoing meetings. I was at Christie Elementary this morning. It's ready to go. They'll do final inspection walks this Thursday. And one of the things I think that, what I noticed when I have driven up to the facility, you have the Salina Fire Department, their station, one of their stations is being built there. Well, the entry in which you can get into Christie, it makes you feel like there's a construction zone going on because that building is not anywhere near where we are with Christie. But when you drive around to what would be the true entry into Christie, there's a very different feel. So we were even talking today with the Pogue team, like working with the construction company for the fire department as well as ours to how do we kind of create that divide. But I'm very pleased, very, very pleased with the work that they've done out there, especially with the September 15th groundbreaking to get started on that project and for y'all to pull that through. My hat is off to you. And I'm not going to say I wasn't a little worried there for a little bit, but I am good to go now. So we're excited to get in there. There's desk in there. There's whiteboards. There's technology. So all the things are coming in place. And Walnut Grove, same exact situation. I'll do a little bit of a superintendent report on Walnut Grove when we get down to the end of the meeting, just so y'all got more of an update on that. But it's just, my hat is off. Four projects. And I know you've got more than that going on, but four that need to open by August 9th, so great job.
Thank you, guys. I actually hear for Dan Christie, we are getting the keys on the 29th, I think it is, so to speak. So, good job. I see some smiles out there. Smiles are good and some nervous laughter, so great. Appreciate it all.
They seem to be ready to give it to us.
That's right. Exactly. Here you go. All right. Okay, so that is construction projects. The administration will provide a preliminary budget information for '23, '24.
We have Ms. Cease tonight.
Hello. Good evening. I just want to start out by saying that I'm really grateful to be in the role of CFO, and it's a privilege to lead this department. I can't say enough about this group. They're very hardworking, dedicated, and they go above and beyond. And Dr. Ferguson always reminds us that we're a learning organization and that we should present excellence in everything that we do. And I feel like that they do this on an ongoing basis, so I'm really proud. The other piece that I love about Prosper ISD is that from the top down, including you, the board, everybody has a heart for kids and employees, every kid and every employee. And that makes this a really special place, place to be. And Dr. Penn mentioned that last month, this budget process is a collaborative effort. And so it's between many different departments, and that's absolutely true. And so we want to thank everybody that's, that's been involved. With that, I'll get started with the second look at '23, '24. So the, the first few slides are just a recap of what we did last month, what Dr. Penn did last month. I won't spend as much time on those as, as we did in the past, but it's good to recap just to provide some context. So we'll do a quick recap from the previous meeting, and then we will look at the functional comparison of '22, '23, their adopted budget, to '23, '24 projected budget. We'll look at food service, debt service, and then next steps. The next couple of slides are just the visuals that you've seen before that explain how the state funds districts. Anytime we can, we like to mention that just because we have a high tax base doesn't mean we get to keep all the, all the tax money. We are formula funded, which means we are funded on the kids in attendance by a basic allotment and the programs they're in, and these programs are weighted with different weights. So for example, CTE has a different weight than special ed. If we accumulate more than the funding allows, the formula allows, then we must send money back to the state. And you've heard this called recapture Robin Hood, and now it's called excess local revenue. The bucket just represents the school's needs, and, and you fill it with taxes first. And if you fill it all the way with taxes, then we fund it ourself. If you don't, the state puts some, some water on top of it. And if, if it overflows, we have to send money back, which is the excess local revenue. The next slide is just another, same concept, another visual, and it's a TEA. So as the local share goes up, the state share goes down. The next slide is the tax rate. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the history. The green box is the current, and the blue box is our projected tax rate. So as certified values come in, which they're supposed to come in tomorrow, then the state will provide us the MCR, maximum compressed rate. So the top green arrow was the one that we were working with prior to this last special session. We recently received information that they're going to compress that 10 more cents. So this does lower our tax rate, but the state will offset the loss in funding. And then you've heard about the homestead exemption. That's $100,000. It was 40, so that we feel like that will be approved in November. I mean, it usually is. This will reduce tax collections overall, but the state will also offset the funding. On the debt service side, it'll prevent us from, the property values, we'll have to watch how much debt we take on just to make sure we can make the payments. But the state will hold harmless for anything that we've already been obligated to. Another item to note is that the tax rate will be going down, but the average homeowner's tax bill will go up because of the values. The revenue highlights and the assumptions that this budget was based on are growing 2,600 kids, increased interest rates. And then we always want to note that the fast growth allotment, if we were funded 100%, we would have gotten $6 million more. So we got 28 million, and we would have gotten 34 million. And there was talk of funding that fully. So next, we're going to look at revenue totals. As you can see, the preliminary projected budget is $295.2 million. So it's up $44.8 million. The amount entitled is going up per kid, and then the tax revenue amount goes up with the levy. So I want to point out that the 96 million that you see in the state revenue, it does include a $15 million TRS booking entry that we have to make. It's offset, so it's just an, an accounting entry that's required. We have some minimal federal revenue there, and that's just reimbursement programs like E-Rate, Charz. Dr. Hickey's group does that. E-Rate Technology Group takes care of that. And then some indirect costs. So some more highlights on the personnel side. We have added about 454 staff members since '22, '23. So that was within the year, and then all the new positions as well for like $38 million with staff raises and new employees. So the average employee has a cost of $75,000, and that includes around $18,000 in associated costs. We did receive an $800,000 school safety grant, and so that reduced the security budget on the operating side. We're still spending money on security. It's just pulled out into another fund, and it'll be back next year. We don't expect that to continue. There was a big focus on refining staffing ratios with the district this year. Between business and HR, they worked really hard on that. That'll just help provide consistent methods that are key as we, as we continue to grow like we are. The expenses on the non-personnel side. Inflation and growth are hitting us like they're hitting, inflation's hitting everyone, and growth is certainly hitting us. You can see some of the areas. Property insurance is, is almost doubled. The appraisal of district amount has gone up. Utilities, technology, custodial, all those, all those things are, are hitting us. We also have the potential for excess local revenue, like we talked about before. And that's dependent on legislative changes, and when we get all these numbers, we'll be able to refine that. But that's possibly 2.5 million next year. And this year, it's around 200,000 so far is what we've, what we've projected. We also have talked a couple of times about Essar expiration. There's 5 million coming back to the general fund, so we have to account for that as well. The next slide is, is the expenditure budget broken out by payroll and non-payroll. So this one clearly shows that payroll is about 83% of our budget. So for an increase of 40, $46 million, basically. So the total budget for '23, '24 projected is $305 million. And the fund balance impact, I did change this a little bit from last month. We are expecting to receive a $1.2 million E-Rate deposit, which is a significant E-Rate deposit. That is, that is from Electro, Electric Connectivity Fund II or something like that. It was for devices for remote learning. It was for devices for remote learning during the pandemic. So hats off to technology for taking care of that and making sure that we receive that money back. Our current budget proposal contains a nine-point-eight-million-dollar deficit, which will be more than offset by what we're adding this year. We have projected a budget deficit for the past several years, and we've always, we've consistently been able to put back into fund balance by saving on the expenditure side and overperforming on the revenue side. And remember, this assumes that we're going to fill every position and spend every dollar, and we just have, historically have not done that. We feel like this is a conservative approach, and we also feel like that with the growth and the supply and demand issues that we're having, that this is the responsible method. There are some built-in safeguards to keep this very manageable on the expense side. And by planning for this, we're assuming a worst-case scenario like Dr. Penn mentioned last time. And by adding ten to twenty million dollars each year, we're keeping the relationship between budget in the target area of three to six months. If we continue to grow forty million a year, that gives us flexibility for future needs if we do come up with some kind of uncertainty like we have during the pandemic, I guess. Next, we're going to look at the expenditure budget at the functional level. A couple of things to note is we're required to adopt this budget at the functional level. And the function tells us why the expenditures are happening. We've separated these slides by like functions. So all of these functions on this slide are directly classroom-related. I want to point out that the function eleven in the difference column, the twenty-three million of the forty-six million that you saw earlier that the expenditure is increasing, this is approximately half of that. So half of the budget increases going straight to student instruction, which we like to see. There are some percentage changes between twenty-one and thirteen. These are really closely related functions. Thirteen is more curriculum-related, and twenty-one is more overseeing instructional staff. And we've made some restructuring between, kind of between these two, just because we're trying to streamline communications and create consistency across the district as a whole. So this is helping the entire district.
One thing Ms. Sees, I think, is worthy of pointing out, back on the staff development piece of it, Prosper Education Foundation shows up in a big way to help us in that area. So they certainly go above and beyond to support us. So I think we need to certainly, hats off to them.
They do. They certainly do. This section is the Student Services section. Again, it's recoding staff, recoding and growth is what this is. You'll see that a large percentage in function thirty-one. There's some reason for that. With a district like us growing like we are, some of this happened during the year, the changes between these functions. Some of them are coding changes. Some of them are just changes to reflect the expenditure or the job duties better. Some of these positions were moved from function eleven to function thirty-one. And then the rest of this is just primarily growth. Food service and extracurricular, that's related to the growing campuses. And the third high school will make a difference in that. The next section is District and Employee Services. You'll see that the largest budget in this section is maintenance. Maintenance is increased due to opening the four schools and all the inflationary things. There are some big-ticket items in this function. It contains custodial, ground crews, property insurance, utilities. That's a big, big piece of everything. Security also falls in this section. Prosper ISD has historically made security our priority and has chosen to invest significantly above the state allocation or allotment. The allotment's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars next year, and you can see we've got a three-point-one-million-dollar budget. So it's allowed us to have an officer on every campus since August of two thousand and nineteen. And going forward, we have two officers in the high schools and two security officers in the high schools. So that means about seven-point-eight percent of that three million dollars is what the state provides. They did provide this security grant, so this difference would be a little bit more, except we pulled that out. And so, well, that'll be in that local fund that we talked about. So it'll still be spent on security, but it'll just be in a different fund. And like I said, it'll come back next year. The last group is really just other. The seventy-one is just a GASB entry that we're having to make if we're obligating ourselves to things. Audit-wise, they're wanting us to put that in. That's mainly like leases. And next year, it'll be software. So we just have to account for that differently. Eighty-one allows us to handle small construction projects and portables and costs associated with that kind of thing without using the bond funds. The nineties are intergovernmental charges, and so you'll see things like the appraisal district in there, which that's gone up significantly too. And then when we come back with the recapture budget, you'll see it in this area. So ninety-nine is where the appraisal district expenditure is. Next, we're going to look at food service. The revenue is eleven-point-nine million. The expenditures are eleven-point-six million. We feel like this is a conservative estimate based on the expected enrollment and growth in the meals sold in twenty-two, twenty-three. The ending numbers for food service are positive and exceeded the expectations based on the additional meals that we served. And then this is our debt service. The value growth is expected to positively impact this revenue for debt service for twenty-three, twenty-four. But as addressed previously, the homestead exemption for all homeowners will reduce our values. It won't affect the tax revenue on the debt side because the state will hold us harmless for any payment, tax payment, hold harmless for our payments that are already obligated. So we're okay with that, but it will affect the dollar amount of bonds that we can sell in the future. So we have to ensure that we can make those payments based on the new taxable value. This projects a small increase in fund balance, which is needed as the budget continues to grow to ensure that we can make our payments and that we have some flexibility for a number of decisions that we work closely with the finance committee and our financial advisor. And the next steps are, we're going to monitor ongoing legislation for sure. Tomorrow, we're supposed to have the appraisal taxable values. The state then gives us the MCR rate, which I heard today in a meeting that's going to be by August fifth. And then we'll come back to you on August twenty-eighth for the board meeting where we will adopt the budget and set the tax rate. During this time, we are also projecting final expenditures of any kind and any budget amendments for twenty-two, twenty-three. So it's a busy time. We're starting audit preparations. It's a busy time for sure, but it's challenging. It's exciting. And it certainly doesn't get boring, and it's also very rewarding. So this concludes the second look at the preliminary budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And Dr. Penn is here to answer if needed as well. We're passing the baton in the middle, so to speak. So it's not a bad thing, but he might have to back me up a little bit.
You did a very nice job.
Thank you. Great presentation.
I think one thing, just for the community, when you think about the impact of the growth in Prosper ISD, and I was reminded of this last week, being with other superintendents across the state, and they talk about, well, we're fast growth. We've added a thousand students. We added five hundred students. And then, of course, I said, well, last year, we added thirty-four hundred students. They're like, okay, so maybe we're not fast growth. But four buildings opening, just on average, that's thirty-eight hundred kids, basically, students that we're going to put. And then when you look at that impact on what you need for staffing. So when you see those numbers going up, whether it's instructional leadership, guidance and counseling, all of that has to be staffed in those buildings. And so it has a significant impact on our budget. And eighty percent of the budget coming for personnel, and then twenty percent just to pick up all the other things that have to happen in this district. So it's, my hats off to our finance team, Ms. Sees, Dr. Penn. They do an absolutely outstanding job making sure that we're as conservative as we can possibly be. And certainly, the deficit is not something that we are proud of, but we're going to work towards getting that. And you'll see some budget amendments tonight as we're continuing to clean up that budget. But just about every district in this state, with the lack of response from Austin, are adopting a deficit budget, which is a sad state of affairs in public ed. But we will make the best of it.
And in a perfect world, you would see these functions, you know, kind of just increasing by the growth. But with our district, it's almost impossible. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sees.
Okay, we are about to move into action items. I am going to read a bit that I missed at the beginning. So I wanted to make for sure that I got this in before we take any action on anything. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions and real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, this agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. And forgive me for not reading that at the very beginning. Going straight into action items. First one is on the District of Innovation. Dr. Ferguson, would you like to speak to that a little?
Yes, this is actually an amendment to our District of Innovation Plan. And just for everyone in the room, anyone watching, a District of Innovation Plan came in several years ago. Gosh, it's probably been seven or eight years ago now at this point in time. So we've gone through several amendments, changes. And really, what the basis and the purpose of this was is that the local school board would have control over things and that this would be truly, it would stop here. These are where these decisions are made that are in the best interest of Prosper ISD or whatever ISD is out there. We do submit this to the Texas Education Agency so that they have the document, but truly, it is a decision that sits solely in your hands. What we're recommending right now, and this is right on the heels of what Ms. Sees was talking about with fast growth and the impact that that's had on the budget, but class-sized waivers. Our Human Resources Department does an excellent job at being able to keep up with those as they are occurring and being able to enter those into TEA, because we do have to submit those for approval. They would be able to do those as an ongoing basis rather than waiting for the month end and then coming to the board and then having to enter twenty waivers if that's what is needed. In full transparency, though, we will continue to bring those back to you as the board and to the community so we know where those waivers are. And then certification, I don't think I have to share with anyone at this point in time that we have a teacher shortage in our nation, and we are not immune to that by any way. And so what we're looking at, when you get into your more difficult courses to be able to staff, for example, calculus B.C. or physics at the high school, if we can find someone who has the knowledge and could teach that, they may not have the certification. Therefore, we'd like to be able to go ahead and get them onboarded and hired. And then we'll start working towards that certification, going through an alternative certification program. We're probably not looking at utilizing something like this, though, in an elementary classroom, for example. We might see it at our early childhood school because those teachers have to be triple-certified in English as a second language, special education, as well as early childhood. That will be a challenge because when trying to find a teacher with three certifications, sometimes that's a little more difficult. Ms. Gannon, though, has done an outstanding job, and we are staffed at the early childhood school, which is outstanding. People want to work there, which is great. But this is just going to give us a little more flexibility as we run into some of those challenges that we have that we're all facing as public schools. Probationary contracts, so looking at moving those to a three-year probation. And then we also have planning and preparation. This is another thing to help accommodate our early childhood school. Since nineteen sixty-seven, the state has had in place that a thirty-minute duty-free lunch and then forty-five minutes of uninterrupted planning time for teachers. And so that forty-five minutes sometimes can be extremely difficult, especially at the early childhood school. Because, for example, at our elementaries, our specials teachers take on the students so that the teachers can go and plan, be in their professional learning communities. It's a little more challenging at the early childhood school because you don't want to put seventy pre-K students into a gym just so teachers can go and plan. So that gives us some flexibility and certainly, Ms. Gannon and then our other principals to be able to be a little more creative with that forty-five minutes.
Perfect. All right. And just to clarify again, you already said it, but the class waiver sizes, we will continue to see information on that monthly as they come across. I know that we've had that for a number of years going back. So we will continue to do that, have visibility on it.
Yeah. So just one more clarity. In the event we have to hire a non-certified, that does not in any way mean they're not an absolute expert in that field they'll be teaching.
Exactly. And I'm glad that you asked that, Mr. Linker. Many times, just being a former principal, I might have a great substitute who is outstanding with our kids, great with the content. And then I had to bypass that person. I couldn't hire them because they didn't have the certification. And I would have taken them maybe over the person who was certified. And so this gives us more flexibility to really find who is going to be the best for our students to meet those needs that we have.
Okay, this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that the board approve the amendment to the District of Innovation Plan as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Any discussion or questions? Anything further for Dr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I just want to say, Dr. Ferguson and district leadership and staff, I just appreciate, you know, the forethought to putting some of these things together to continue to make, put kids first, right? And thinking about how do we care for them well and putting our staff, considering things there for our staff. So thanks for your leadership there.
Thank you.
I agree.
It's a team. It's a team.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is all six of us. None opposed. Moving on to eight B. Let's see here, we have a shared services agreement. Dr. Ferguson, can you speak to that?
Very proud of Dr. Hickey and Ms. Janik and our Special Education Department. The Texas Education Agency put out for an autism grant specifically to support students with autism. We put in for the grant, not knowing if we would be selected or not, and there were only about fifty school districts across the state that were selected for this. So it certainly helps with the funding impacts that we're seeing, but we were awarded the grant. And so the shared service arrangement, they pair you with another ISD within the state. So we've been paired with Tyler ISD, and they are the conservator over the funds. But we will certainly get our fair share. It was over a million dollars that the grant came through to be able to put those specific supports in place for students with autism. So thank them so much for really keeping that in mind and going after something that's so critical. Because certainly, there are so many more supports and a lot of funding that's needed to support students with autism.
Okay. Any additional questions? Anything from anybody? Okay, another action item. So does anyone have a motion?
I move that the board approve the shared services agreement presented by the administration.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Dixon. A second?
Sure. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. All in favor? That is all six of us again. No oppose. Okay. Moving on, the next one, Dr. Ferguson, you have already hit on this a bit this evening, I've heard. But you're bringing forward this evening a resolution in response to the state's underfunding of public schools. I was wondering if you could speak to that for us real quick.
Yes, sir. This is really, it's devastating to see what's happening in public education in the state of Texas and what is occurring because it directly impacts our students and our staff and the function that we serve. And we serve more than just educating students and being able to support them in so many different facets. And we want to keep our standard high and continue to reach for excellence. And certainly, funding assists with that. But what we have brought to you today is a resolution to really highlight the areas of concern when it comes to funding in the state of Texas and how it directly impacts Prosper ISD. When you look at, and Ms. Sees has already talked about, what we put towards safety and security in this district, we're over ten times what the state is giving us funding for. And then when you look at teacher salary, I know that you all did an outstanding job of really trying to reach up to give teachers an increase as every district across the state was trying to make sure they were taking care of teachers to help support them, and we need more funding. And many of our dollars, just with what recapture, potential money going back, and we're already not getting our share. And so when we look at And so, when we look at what we hold true and dear in this school district and in this community, we want to be able to continue to provide that, and it has funding attached to it. So, we want to be able to make sure that our direct representatives, as well as any other representatives in the state of Texas, as they go into these special sessions to truly understand the hardships that they're placing, not only other school districts, but specifically Prosper ISD in.
Perfect, all right. Knowing that, and tonight when we do this, I know that this board, many members, continue to reach out to our elected officials on up in Austin to work all possible angles of this. But again, we need action on this tonight, so may I have a motion?
Yeah, I move that the board pass the resolution in response to the state's underfunding of public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. All in favor? That is all six of us again, and no opposed.
Yeah, I think it's also important, just to reiterate something Dr. Ferguson said, is this is kind of that step for our board in starting to take some more advocacy action, especially while we're in session, or legislators are in session. And so, this letter, this resolution, is going to be sent to all of our representatives to try to make that statement a little bolder than what we've been in the past. And so, just want the community to know, we're stepping up as a board in the advocacy front to try to effect positive change in a positive way.
Yeah, we, Mr. Dial and Ms. Dixon and myself took a trip to Austin along with students. This past year was in April, I think it was. And students did an absolutely awesome job. It was nice to let them drive, but they were...
They didn't drive.
Well, no, they didn't. I'm sorry, they... Thank you.
Broke the conversation.
The conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to see if everybody was awake out there. So, good, we all are. But they did an awesome job with that and really advocating for their teachers as well. So, we appreciate those students that went this past year. Let's see here, that now takes us to 8D. Let's see here, we're talking about the handbooks on this one. So, Dr. Ferguson, I'll let you speak a little.
So, we received the handbook, model handbook template, a little bit later than usual, you may have noticed. Because typically, it's a June time that we're bringing that to you for your review. And in full transparency, so that the community has view of all of those handbooks as well for elementary, middle, and high school, those are all separated out. Because we are in a legislative session, sometimes you will see a delay because they're kind of waiting to see what happens with the legislators in Austin to see if laws change. We didn't get a ton of movement out of this session, so they went ahead and sent those to us. It does not mean, though, that we may not have some amendments coming our way, and we will certainly bring those to you. And then our principals will highlight any changes that are happening in those handbooks through their campus newsletters and different ways of communication so that parents are fully aware. One thing that I think is extremely notable, and it needs to be noted, and we will overly communicate this. One of the changes is that if students are caught with a vape, they will be subject to DAEP. In the past, it's been a vape with THC in it, and now it is a vape, period, which I'm in full support of because a vape has no place whatsoever in our schools. And as we know, vapes then can be a gateway drug to the next step. And that's certainly not what we want our students to even have the availability to do. And it may be a couple of hard lessons to learn, but certainly, we will do our due diligence because we want to keep our kids safe.
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. With that, we have another action item here. I will entertain a motion.
Sure. I move that the board approve the student handbooks as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any discussion or further questions at this point? Okay, hearing none.
Oh, I was just going to say, I am in appreciation that the schools will do, you know, their job of making sure that the students and the families know about that change.
Now, that's going to be front-page news.
Absolutely.
Because we want every, I've already started having that conversation in my own home.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second out there, all in favor. That is all six of us again. Thank you. Let's see here, 8C, the Student Code of Conduct. Speaking, I guess, a little more on that, on the vape pens?
Yeah, and that is actually where the vape pens are going to sit within that code of conduct. So, I've already explained about that. And then you're going to have specifically in code of conduct, probably one of the biggest highlights that parents take away are the dress code. And that's something that we've already been in communication about, how to tighten that up even more. And we certainly want to partner with our parents because that is a huge piece of the parent and school working together to ensure that our students are dressed appropriately to learn at school.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Student Code of Conduct?
I recommend that we approve, I'm sorry, I make a motion to approve the Student Code of Conduct as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Any discussion, questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us again. And that will take us to 8F, Construction Manager at Risk for Elementary 19.
Dr. Bradley will come forward.
Members of the board, we recently took bids for a CM at Risk contractor for Elementary 19. This elementary would not open until August of 2025. And so, we believe that this elementary will likely go in Legacy Gardens. And so, this is Elementary 19, due to some of the supply chain issues we've had over time. We are trying every day to get further out in front of these projects. And so, we're bringing this to you earlier than normal. The other thing that's going on here is we actually have the land secured on this one, and we know where we need to go. Oftentimes, we haven't had the luxury of getting out in front because the land wasn't available or we weren't sure where the elementary was going to go yet. This one, we know that we're going to need an elementary in this portion of the district. We have the land there at Legacy Gardens. And so, we started this process early, wanted to go ahead and get a construction manager onboard so that we can break ground earlier. And hopefully, by this time in 2025, we'll be talking about a building that was ready to go for three months instead of, hey, we're running down to the end here. And so, we had four companies respond to the bid. We evaluated those last week. The recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight, based on the criteria adopted by the board some time ago, after our evaluation, we are recommending Pogue Construction. They had a construction fee of 0.9% and a construction contingency of 0.5% with a $5,000 pre-construction fee. And you can see on your chart that that brings them to the lowest total there as far as cost. But then also, as we evaluated the other criteria adopted by the board, that is our recommendation tonight would be to go ahead and get Pogue onboard pending your approval so that we can get them involved with Huckabee and get Elementary 19 up and running and start purchasing some of these long-lead items such as HVAC and switchgear and these things that are now taking 12 to 15 months sometimes to procure. So, that's our recommendation tonight. We do have some representatives from Pogue Construction here. If there's, or if there's any questions, the board has a meal, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions this evening? Okay, Elementary 19.
Elementary 19.
Wow, okay.
Let's go.
Yeah, moving right along. Let's see here, it is an action item, so does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we consider that we approve and award the Construction Manager at Risk contract for Elementary 19 to Pogue?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. All right. That takes us to, let's see here, Consent Agenda 9, or excuse me, Consent Agenda. It's number nine in here. We've got a few things to do, the minutes from the prior meeting. Thank you, Mr. Dial, for keeping an eye on those, getting that set for us. Let's see here, we've also got investment officers, as well as authorized users for Techspool, and then a couple of budget amendments. Any questions, concern, anybody need to pull anything from Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none, can I please have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the board approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? That is all six of us. All right, we now moved on to public comments. I will read a brief part here. "We now move to the public comments session of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from the citizens who have completed public comment registration this evening. Please be advised that the information shared in public comment is not an endorsement of the information shared by the presenter and solely provides the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Thirty minutes have been allotted for public comments, three minutes for the speaker this evening. Please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operation. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you are encouraged to utilize district grievance procedures, providing in Board Polity, DGBA Local, FNG Local, and GF Local. Each grievance procedure allows for an individual to regress with the Board of Trustees." Finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issue that are not properly posted on the agenda. This evening, we have one speaker. It is Mr. Shane Williams.
Good evening, Dr. Ferguson, President Beavers, Board of Trustees. My name is Shane Williams, and my wife and I, Lindsay, live in Lake Silicema. We have two twins that just finished the fifth grade at Folsom Elementary. And I want to preface my comments by saying that I'm the son of a 33-year educator. And early in the third grade, so let me back up, I know the impact that a teacher has on a child. Early in the third grade, my twins couldn't be more different, night and day. One's full of life, one's kind of reserved and laid back like their mother. But everything's a competition down to the chicken nuggets at night that's for dinner, right? So, early in the third grade, we noticed that something was off with one of the twins as far as reading and keeping up with his brother. And so, after many conversations, Lindsay and I were introduced to Take Flight. And the teacher that really walked us through that and guided us through that, Ms. Kimberly Cooper, can't say enough about her. She became a part of our family. She took a child that's really always upbeat and just full of life and turned it around, turned this deal around, and made it a competition for him. And so, fast forward to fifth grade, we caught wind that she was going to be moving from third to fifth. So, we followed the proper chains and made the request to get in her class. Well, you know, you take it and you got two years with one teacher, and she's really become a part of our family. And what she did for Kai is she made it a competition and really just brought us confidence back, brought him back to where he was when we started. And I'm proud to announce that he finished fifth grade reading on level, and so, he's moving on into the sixth grade. So, really, I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Thank this board, thank this administration for the leadership that you provide. And I just want to reiterate, I cannot say enough about Ms. Kimberly Cooper. What a godsend, just a phenomenal, phenomenal testament to this district, to this administration. She represents you all extremely well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, and we will now go into...
Can I move that Mr. Williams comes every month?
We've now got the superintendent's report.
Yeah, the superintendent's report, so you may or may not know, but we have a solar car. If you've driven by Rock Hill High School at any point in time during the school year, you probably saw it doing laps around the building, doing practice runs. So, they took that practice run from Texas Motor Speedway, and they were to make their journey over eight days to Palmdale, California. So, these students are made up of both Rock Hill High School and Prosper High School. And you see a little WG in there because it's coming. But obviously, the kids were at Rock Hill and Prosper this past year. Unfortunately, over this journey, so they go and make their way to California to go to the competition to actually be judged. They received information around El Paso that 18 out of the 24 judges had fallen ill and that the competition was not happening. Yeah, so pretty devastating. So, they could have trailered the solar car and gone ahead and just brought it back and probably been back right in a day. But in true Prosper fashion, our kids said no, and our staff that were with the kids, supporting them, said, nope, let's make the most of this. So, they actually then turned their competition into coming back home. And so, they all got a chance to drive, at least, I think, four times throughout this journey. So, they all got their test run, and yesterday, we were able to welcome them home in the blazing Texas heat to see their successful return and safe return. So, super proud of these students and all that they've accomplished, and then the staff that just truly invest in them. Top speed is 52 miles an hour, but you don't go 52 miles an hour, especially first thing in the morning. So, they're running about 20 miles an hour because of the solar panel having to get energy to get going. So, just know that it is a slow burn. Slow burn, so, but they made it, and we are super proud of them, and they represented us at the highest level. So, couldn't be more proud of that innovative learning and excited to be able to take some superintendents this coming December actually over and visit the solar car so that they can see our students in action and talk to our staff.
And that was a combination of students from both high schools.
Yes, and then you see the Walnut Grove, it's because, well, some of those kids are going. So, yeah. And then our Human Resources update, I cannot say enough amazing things about Human Resources. They have worked around the clock, countless hours, trying to make sure that we are onboarding people with people, making all sorts of choices. Because the minute they get an ask for the business world, you'll see an employee leave because of the pay. So, back to our resolution for the underfunding, that is a direct impact of what's happening with our staffing. But I will say that Ms. Hunt and her team have done an absolutely phenomenal job. Multiple new hire sessions coming through, people are excited about being in Prosper ISD. We have now onboarded between attrition and then our ads, we're up to over 800 people. So, when you think about onboarding 800 people over a very small span of time, that is some pretty incredible work that has been accomplished in making sure that they're all taken care of at a high level. One of the things that I want to point out is that we have a job fair actually tomorrow for special education. So, specifically for special education, and Dr. Hickey and her team have done a great job of taking that on and really taking some of that legwork off of our principals. So, they're vetting these employees, and then they're sending them, or potential employees. And then the following day, on Thursday, we'll have a general education job fair in order to be able to see who might like to join our great family here in Prosper ISD. So, but pretty outstanding work, especially harder work than it's ever been because of teacher shortage. Again, it could all be fixed in Austin, just same with the $33 billion surplus. But I'm going to step off of that for a moment. So, because I want to talk about another great thing that is happening in our district. Walnut Grove High School, absolutely breathtaking building. And I know that you all have been able to go over there and see it, and I know you're about to get to go back for another look at the building. I am just absolutely blown away. When you look at the magnitude of our ask of can we expedite this project, a high school, a year in advance, and get that open to do what is best for kids? Pogue Construction delivered hand over fist, and I will give a shout out to Huckabee, too, because they've been along the journey every single step of the way. Even sitting in construction meeting today with Pogue, and Huckabee was sitting right there, making sure that we had everything that we need. I cannot wait for our kids to get inside of this fabulous facility and really just soak up everything that it has to offer. And of course, Mr. Toth is planning every event under the sun to make it the most special place on the planet because that's what he does, and we're really excited to be able to open that up. But again, I just, to know, a year in advance, 600,000 square feet of a high school, and it's going to open ready to go, it's a miracle. So, great job. Okay, then the next question is First Street. Because First Street runs in front of Walnut Grove High School. And if you've been over to that area, you may have a bit of pause or concern. Maybe your superintendent does. But because we have a great working relationship with the town of Prosper, Mayor Bristol and his team have assured me, they are coming in clutch for us to make sure that that road is safe for our students and our staff and our parents to travel. And I'm glad that he is here tonight because he has more of the details. And if you would come forward, we would love to hear all that you all are doing for First Street to make sure our kids and staff and parents are taken care of.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson and board, Mr. Beavers.
And on behalf of the Town Council and our staff, I thank you for all that you guys are doing to get the high school ready. And I'll just read kind of a little statement of what we've got prepared for you. The town has been working diligently to ensure that motorists have access to Walnut Grove High School by the first day of school. The expansion of First Street to a four-lane roadway has been on the town's long-term capital improvement plan for several years, with the original construction date, as you stated, for 2024. And with the board's decision to open at Walnut Grove a year earlier, we agreed to accelerate the road project to accommodate the new school. Thankfully, Mario Sinicola and Sons, who was awarded the contract last fall, they began construction in October of '22. The Sinicola team is committed to having one eastbound lane and one westbound lane, as you see on the chart on your screen. It's on the southern side, completed by August 8. Now, I've personally talked to Mr. Sinicola twice in the past week and said, are you sure? And he said, I can assure you that we may be out there midnight of the night before, but the roadway will be complete. To those of you who have driven the road, like I drove it yesterday, both at 1:00 and at 4:00, just to see if there's any changes. There wasn't any. It causes me anxiety, but I know they're working very diligently. You may have seen they've got the lights set up out there to work at night also. Throughout this project, the representatives from the town of Prosper, Prosper ISD, Mario Sinicola, and Pogue Construction have held regular collaboration meetings to facilitate the completion of the first two lanes. The remaining two lanes are scheduled for completion in the spring of 2024. And there are a few milestones I wanted to go over with you. Last week, the traffic was shifted to the new pavement from Coit Road to Town Lake Drive, and it's now open to eastbound traffic only. This week, we're going to do new pavement from Custer Road to Whitley Place Drive, and this section remains two-way. There'll be new pavement from Whitley Place Drive to the western boundary of Walnut Grove High School, and that will be eastbound only. Also, they will put pavement on the south side of First Street from Coit to Town Lake. Then next week, there's going to be new pavement from Town Lake Drive to Sutherland Boulevard, which should connect both sides of the bridge. Then there'll be an installation of an additional southbound lane on Coit north of First Street. So, you may have seen we dug on the westbound side of Coit. So, we're going to put an additional temporary lane over there. So, you should be able to get a turn lane from Coit going south, and then two main lanes going straight and one turn lane. So, we haven't figured out the striping on that, how, if we're going to have two left-hand turn lanes into that or not. Then the week of August 7th, we'll complete the striping and signage installation prior to the opening. And prior to the first day of the school, there will be four lanes of First Street from Coit Road to Town Lake Drive to provide the additional capacity on Coit Road and First Street. And then two lanes of First Street from west of Town Lake to Custer Road, allowing for the two-way traffic with one lane in east direction. And then the additional southbound lane on Coit, and also TexDOT should finish the traffic signal on First and Custer. And again, I drove there yesterday, the lights are up there, they're just not opened up. So, that, this project is an active construction zone throughout the rest of spring of 2024. So, the rest of the work's going to be continuing, but we're going to have two lanes open in time for school. I'm pretty sure. And the most important thing is that the contractor has assured me that if there is any hiccups, that we're going to be the first ones to know, and we'll make sure we, we're in communication. I anticipate it's going to be done, but, you know, it is still construction, so.
Hopefully, there won't be any rain, right?
No, this is Texas, there's no rain. We don't have any, so.
Well, I just want to say thank you to you specifically. I remember sitting down with you many moons ago and saying, by the way, I think we're going to expedite the high school. And your eyes got kind of wide, and then you immediately went to work to make sure and ensure that this project was going to come through. So, thank you.
I do want to acknowledge the role of Mario Sinicola. They have done a lot of work. We have another project they're working on, on the west side of town. They've pulled their crews in there to try and make sure we can get this done, so. But with that, any questions you might have for me?
We appreciate it. We'll be watching.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I think that would do it.
Okay, yes, that is, that's big right there. All right, we will now, we will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas government code, including but not limited to Sections 551.071, .072, .074, and .076. When we are finished with our closed session discussion, we will return to open session to take any action that needs to be taken. The time is now 8:01 PM. Thank you.
We're back in open session. The time is now 9:54 PM.
I'll make one. I move that the board approved contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dial. All in favor? That is all six of us. All right. No opposed. Okay, that is it for the evening. I'd like to thank everybody for coming in this evening. If there are no objections, the time is now 9:55 and we are done. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you.